Which is the July 11th, 2019 meeting of the North Hampton City Council. To welcome everybody, I'm Ryan O'Donnell, I'm the council president, so I'll be running the meeting. These proceedings are being audio and video recorded, broadcast on NCTV to all your friends and neighbors. And we will begin, as we always do, with public comment. This is a chance for anyone to speak about anything. There's only a couple rules that I ask in order to guarantee that everyone has equal time and everyone can be heard fairly. And the first rule is please keep your comments to three minutes or less. And second, please remember that it's your time. Because of the open meeting law, we can't have a back-and-forth with you on subjects. So, give your opinion to us and to the public, and please feel encouraged to follow up with your counselors or city officials after, but we don't have debates. It's your time to be heard. Okay? So, I will start with a sign-up sheet. If you haven't signed up, don't worry, I'll ask, anyone can talk afterwards. You'll forgive any mispronunciations. And the first is Andrea Ageto. Welcome. Floor is yours.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Ageto. I live in Florence and I am the teacher-chapter coordinator for the North Hampton Association of School Employees. We're still here. We've been told by the school committee in our mediation sessions that the mayor said he would not allocate any more money to the school budget, even though he had promised that multiple times in his public budget meetings. To meet our request for a fair contract for all school employees, the school budget needs to be increased by about $250,000 each year. In the first two quarterly payments, the city has already received over $1.3 million in revenue from cannabis sales. That money alone could cover our request for the three years of our next contract. But instead, the mayor was quoted in the newspaper as saying he'll be adding it to capital improvements. Really? Really? Capital improvements? More capital improvements? When our employees aren't making a living wage? The very $15 minimum wage that the mayor signed a petition for? The city doesn't have to pay its employees. So we have cafeteria workers starting making $11.64 an hour in North Hampton. Do you value the educators in this city? That's my question. The people that feed, clean up after, care for, love, and teach our children. Do you value their work? Or are you expecting that a predominantly female workforce will quiet down? Be nice and be politely grateful for giving what they are given. We're not going to do it anymore. Do you value the educators in this city? If you do, prove it. To whatever you have to convince our mayor to allocate the money to the school budget, and then to direct the school committee to settle the contract now, before it's too late, before our schools fall apart. Because right now, the value of the North Hampton Public Schools is the value of the city of North Hampton. We're not going to take it anymore. We're not going to let things be built and added on our backs anymore. $950,000 garages, various things elsewhere. We're not going to be quiet anymore. So please, do whatever you can. We have the money. It's in the budget, and I have faith that all of you can help the mayor find it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mike Kirby. Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Former counselor, Kirby.
Former counselor, ex-counselor, has-been counselor. Hi, I'm Mike Kirby. I'm going to, it's the first time I've been up here for a long time, so I'm basically doing it just to give my mouth some exercise, to see if it works or not, because it may have stopped working at some point. But if one thing gets my mouth going, it's being in a state of what they call high dudgeon. I don't know if anybody knows what high dudgeon is, but it's extremely upset. And the minor thing that kind of set me off today was all these stakes along Prospect Street. From the hospital, all the way to Prospect, all the way down Prospect Street, every 22 feet, there's a stake that says "A Tree" is going to go in. Now, trees are beautiful, but they cost money. And the Department of Public Works, its budget is going up in '22, in '20, year '20. In fact, it's going up 15%. And it's much more going up than the school budget, which I think is about 4%. Is that right?
Yes, thank you.
And over the last month or so, I've been looking at all the trucks, the brand-new trucks, and equipment that the DPW does. And it seems like we're spending a lot of money on equipment that other communities rent on a need basis. In other words, if you need a grader, get it for a couple days. We've got a grader sitting in the garage all year. In fact, there may be two graders, I'm not sure. But essentially, what, and the other day, we bought a tree stump grinder. Not just an ordinary tree stump grinder, but this is a Carlton, top-of-the-line. It's got a diamond-shaped cutting wheel. It costs close to $100,000. And we have another stump grinder that works perfectly fine. So my sense is, we see far too much equipment on the street. Thank you very much for listening to me, okay?
Thank you, Mr.
And I want to say one final thing before I'm kicked in, I'm sorry, Mel.
Could you do it in a short sentence?
Yeah.
Please.
That we need to spend the money for these teachers here, you know? There's a ton of money there, somewhere in that big budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're all set with that, it's going to pick you up.
Thank you. Jennifer Derringer, 60 North Street, North Hampton, and I am here tonight to speak in support of the resolution regarding the right to counsel in eviction cases. I'm a managing attorney at Community Legal Aid. We provide free legal services in civil cases for low-income folks in all of the four western counties, as well as Worcester. And CLA, like most legal aid programs, specializes in representing tenants in eviction cases, the very kind of cases that this resolution references. And that is why other successful right-to-counsel programs around the country have utilized legal aid attorneys to implement their laws. While many people believe there's already a right to counsel in civil legal cases, particularly those as important as eviction defense cases, there is not. Over 90% of Massachusetts tenants across the state are unrepresented. They have to go to court and represent themselves in eviction cases. Legal aid, in part through the city's funds, through CDBG, gets funding to provide these services. But we still, even with that funding, and the state funding and federal funding, we turn away about 50% of those that are eligible financially for our services. There's not enough resources to help them. The need for experienced counsel when facing eviction is especially pronounced for vulnerable low-income folks, the ones that we help, the folks that are likely to become homeless if they are not able to, if they're unsuccessful in housing court. Legal aid attorneys who specialize in eviction cases advocate, navigate complicated rules and regulations, particularly around subsidized tenancies, raise affirmative claims, and problem-solve issues with the tenancy. This often prevents families from losing their homes and becoming homeless. It also benefits landlords in a variety of different ways. We can access money for rent arrears, we can get tenants back on subsidy programs, which brings money back to the landlord, we can access services for tenants with disabilities. That all benefits the landlords. We act as problem solvers often, and we are often able to solve the problem and get the tenancy back on track. The best way to illustrate the importance of counsel in these cases is to briefly tell you about either one or two stories, depending on how quickly I speak. The first one is Jane, a single woman living in North Hampton in subsidized housing. Jane was a survivor of severe sexual assault and battery, a trauma that led to multiple psychiatric hospitalizations. After one of the discharges, she had a crisis that led to a conflict with management. That in turn led to management starting the eviction process. We were able to work with the landlord to explain how the law protects Jane in these circumstances. We were able to get her services, increase services that she needed to stabilize her, and the landlord agreed to allow her to stay in her apartment once she got those stabilizing supports. Another story is an elder, an elder folks who had lived in North Hampton for 30 years lost their subsidy. We were able to get their subsidy back, as well as get the money paid back that they owed, and they were able to stay in their house of over 30 years. So those are the kind of stories that we are looking at here, so I urge you to support the resolution for right to counsel in eviction cases. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Derringer. Another former counselor, Pamela Schwartz. Welcome.
Welcome, everybody. I'm Pamela Schwartz, I live at 22 Columbus Avenue, North Hampton. And I'm here tonight in my capacity as director of the Western Massachusetts Network to end homelessness, to speak in support of the resolution filed by Counselors Tiara and Counselor Dwight around right to counsel and eviction sealing. First of all, thank you, counselors. Really appreciate your leadership on this. And I'm going to take a couple minutes to talk about the Homes Bill, or the eviction sealing bill. Coming from the network, the network is a broad-based coalition of nonprofit providers, state agency folks, entities from across every single sector that you can imagine that works to stabilize people in their homes, from housing providers to childcare, to community colleges, to workforce development, et cetera. And we work together around tables all the time. There may be 300 people in total that are coming together. One of the single most recurring issues that comes up around our tables is what can we do about the eviction record on a tenant that bans them effectively for life from getting another apartment? Because right now, it is effectively like an eviction for life. When an eviction case is filed, it is there as public record. And whether or not it's dismissed, whether or not you file counterclaims and you win, all that landlord sees when they conduct a search is an eviction, and they deny the application before going another step further. The consequences are so severe, are truly potentially lifelong, and they are direct contributor to homelessness. And I can't tell you how many stories I'm carrying around indirectly from the people who are serving people, who are saying, "We have to do something about this. We cannot get the people we are trying to rehouse into an apartment because an eviction was filed." And this bill will make a massive difference in the lives of hundreds and hundreds and thousands of people. Since 1998, 1 million eviction cases have been filed in this state. 1 million eviction cases, those are permanent records. It is like a scarlet E across these people's forehead. And this bill will allow an instant sealing when an eviction is filed, and that it only becomes unsealed after the disposition of the case if it is against the tenant. So it is a protection for the housing efforts, and it is also, let me add, a protection around the injustices based on the color of people's skin and their ethnicity. Right now, in Massachusetts, 74% of tenants are Latinx, 66% are African-American, and 32% are white. So you can see how this plays out. And I just want to add that the timing of this resolution, extra, extra thanks for getting it on the docket right now, there is a hearing on Tuesday, July 16th, next week. Our great legislator, Senator Comerford and Representative Sabadosa are cosponsoring both of these bills. They're ready to testify in favor of it. They want to bring our community, they are prepared to bring North Hampton in support of this, and say, "We believe in this, we need this, we know what we need to do to contribute to the end of homelessness in North Hampton, Western Massachusetts, and the state of Massachusetts."
Thank you very much. Thank you. Continuing with the same household.
Yes.
Joe Feldman.
22 Columbus Ave. I'm a former legal aid lawyer. I have a small civil rights and tenant practice in Springfield, and I represent only tenants in Springfield and also in North Hampton. I wanted to just talk about the numbers one more second here. Last year, there were 40,000 evictions filed in Massachusetts, 30,000 in housing court, and in the Western Mass Housing Court that covers North Hampton, 5,738. Of those, 70% of landlords had a lawyer, 7% of tenants had a lawyer. And this is a system that's designed for two lawyers, and I just want to quote a decision from the Supreme Judicial Court that came down a couple months ago. "The complexity and speed of summary process," which are eviction cases, "and disparities in legal representation between landlords and tenants. Specifically, we note that summary process cases are complex, fast-moving, and generally litigated by landlords who are represented by attorneys and tenants who are not." So that's from the state Supreme Court, talking about its own eviction process. Part of the fun job that I have is sitting in housing court on Thursdays often, and waiting for hours to be heard by a judge. I was in court Tuesday, actually, and I counted who was in the court, just looking at the lawyers. There were 13 lawyers. I was the only tenant lawyer in the court. Today, there are, in Springfield, there are ordinarily between 100 and 200 cases on for eviction on a Thursday. Thursday's the eviction day by rule in Massachusetts. There's a page listing of all the cases that's posted. The last page had 32 cases on it. Every landlord was represented, every tenant was listed as "pro se," which is Latin for "representing yourself." There were no tenant lawyers on the last page of the docket. So that's the situation we have. I just also want to discuss, as Jen did, I wanted to talk about my own practice and what's happened when there is a lawyer. I'm sometimes the lawyer for a day, which is a volunteer in the court to make sure that some people at least get some representation if you're a tenant. I had a case where a homeowner was about to be evicted, had asked for more time from the bank who had foreclosed on her. The lawyer had said no, and she was about to get evicted that day. I was able to come in. There was an argument that the bank hadn't foreclosed properly, and she lives for another day. Without a lawyer, there was no question she was going to be evicted that day. Same thing, I had a tenant who was living in a house that had been sold. She has a wheelchair, she couldn't use her kitchen because the flooring was so bad. The management company who brought the eviction had no right to evict her under Massachusetts law, but she was ready to move out. And I was the lawyer for a day, came in, case got dismissed. So the difference between a lawyer and not a lawyer is enormous. It doesn't have to be this way. We can even the scales. We can put our city on record saying that we want actual justice. A system designed for lawyers should have lawyers, and not depend on the ignorance of a party to get an unjust result. Please pass the resolution.
Thank you. Andrea Vazian? Floor is yours.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Vazian, and I live in North Hampton. I come to you as a registered nurse, with a master's degree in maternal-child health, and as an ordained minister in the United Church of Christ. I am also a longtime community activist. I am here to speak in support of your resolution to encourage the state legislature to remove the religious exemption to vaccinations. As a nurse, I am here to say again what I believe you already know, that measles can be very dangerous, possibly fatal, and that the measles vaccine is both effective and safe. As a member of the clergy, I believe that the expression of religious beliefs is a cherished right and civil liberty, but that right does not extend to the point where school populations are put at risk for failure to vaccinate one's child. As a community activist, I am concerned that here, in our community, there are pockets of low immunization rates that pose risks for the entire community, and that public action is necessary to assure public safety. Please tell the legislature that Massachusetts should join the growing list of states that have disallowed the religious exemption for vaccines, keeping in place only the medical exemption. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do I have Marissa Marks? Hello?
I'm Marissa Marks, 150 Prospect Avenue in North Hampton. I'm here to talk about fair wages for our teachers. My family came to this country when I was nine years old, from the former Soviet Union. Our first step was to find housing, and the second step was to move to a town with excellent public schools. I ended up graduating from a high school where 98% of the students went to university and had a wide variety of AP classes. My husband and I moved to North Hampton in 2007, had our first child within a few months after that. And when we were house hunting, we looked at staying in North Hampton or moving to some of the surrounding towns that maybe were cheaper. And we decided to stay in North Hampton because we wanted the schools that North Hampton had to offer. We now have three kids in North Hampton Public Schools. They've had fantastic teachers at Jackson Street School, and I want those teachers to stay, and I want the teachers who are recruited to the North Hampton Public Schools to be high-quality teachers as the ones that my kids have had so far. And I don't want the quality teachers to leave because they're not getting a fair contract. Please keep that in mind in setting your budgets.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who has not signed up but would like to talk? Anybody? Yes, please, come on up.
My name is Julie Hammond. I live right down the road at 5 Clark Avenue. I teach physics at South Hadley High School, but I've been a resident here for three years. I wanted to stay in North Hampton. My significant other and I, Guy Rosen, we started talking about where we wanted to buy a house. We've been renting for the last three years. And we both want to stay in North Hampton, we love it here. But when I started hearing about the way teachers were being treated, that North Hampton isn't prioritizing public education, when I benefited from the public education. I am who I am today because my teachers taught me how to read and write, how to do math, how to do physics. I wouldn't be standing here today if I hadn't had those teachers. And being someone who was thinking about getting a house and starting a family, as a hopeful future mother, I can't send future children to a school district who doesn't value teachers. So I hope to come back, but only if a budget is passed that actually values educators in our community. So, thank you.
Anyone else like to give public comment? Anybody on any subject? No? All right, and hearing none, we will convene the council and start our work. And so I'll ask for a roll of the council.
Counselor Goodwell.
Here.
Counselor Carr.
Present.
Counselor White.
Here.
Counselor Klein.
Here.
Counselor Carr.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Nash.
Here.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Here.
All right, so we are here. First is a public hearing on 19/106, which is an application to amend the license for fuel storage. FP02A at the Department of Public Works Headquarters, 125 Locust Street. In accordance with natural law, Chapter 148, the City of North Hampton Department of Public Works has submitted an amended application for license for above-ground storage of diesel, gasoline, it's 12,500 gallons. Oh, no, diesel, 12,500 gallons, gasoline, 12,500 gallons, and waste oil, 5,000 gallons, at the City of North Hampton Public Works Garage, located 125 Locust Street. So now is our public hearing. This is going to be on the consent agenda later, but for the start, I'd like a motion to open the public.
So moved.
And seconded by Counselor LaBarge. Any discussion on that? All those in favor opening the hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, any abstentions. So, Mr. Mayor, would you like to introduce this?
Sure would, yes. So this is the, this is part of the DPW Fuel Depot replacement project that has been on the capital program for the past several years. The city council issued a license for the existing fuel depot, as it's required to do. Some of you may recall, a year or so ago, you had to issue a license for the new Cumberland Farms. Tank licenses is the purview of the city council. So what we're asking to do is to amend the existing license for the new storage tank, and if you want a photograph. So what's basically happening is we have two underground storage tanks now, at the current DPW fuel farm. And the project is basically going to take, basically we have two underground, 10,000 diesel, 10,000 of normal gasoline, as well as a waste storage tank as well. And so what this will be converting to is this above-ground storage tank, which will have a capacity, 12,500 gallons each of diesel and gasoline fuel. There'll be a canopy erected over the fuel dispensing area, there'll be a concrete pad foundations. You see, there's bollards, there's also a pretty complicated leak detection system, as well as a fire suppression system. This is, you saw on the license, the fire department had to review the plans for it, as well as the state fire marshal. They have both approved the plans for it and support issuance of the license. Basically, the process from here is, once we have the license amended, we can then apply for the state permits, which we hope to secure later this month. And then the tank and canopy fabrication will begin. That'll take about 12 weeks. The demolition and site work, we hope, will happen between September and December. And then, we hope the project will be completed by January 2020. Again, this is a capital improvement project, and this would require you to vote to grant an amendment to the current license, just basically the change in the style of tank.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public who'd like to speak in this public hearing on this matter? For, against, neutral, or anything? No? Hearing done, I'll ask the other members of the council. Counselor LaBarge.
Yes. Mayor, what is going to be the cost?
So this is a capital improvement project that was already approved and funded, and the cost of this new fuel farm is $633,000. One of the concerns we have, or one of the reasons that's precipitating it, is the age of the underground storage tanks, which have to be replaced, as often happens. This is a far less expensive way to go, the above-ground versus the underground. It also eliminates the risk of potential underground contamination. And these above-ground tanks are tested for, you know, fire, they're tested holistically, and they have multi-wall tanks with detection systems between the walls, so at the first sign of a leak, they can be shut down and addressed. So that's what this project is about.
Haven't, hasn't the state been looking at this, of removing underground tanks and bringing them above?
Yeah, I don't know what.
For the past four or five years now, they've been looking.
Yeah, certainly, I know that it's something that the fire chief is very supportive of, as well as, again, I think, you know, the EP's perspective, the less underground, the better, just because they're, that when they leak, that's when there's environmental problems. And we have lots of, you know, 21E sites around the state, from, you know, tanks that have leaked, and then leach into the soils and cause problems. So, yeah, I'm not really sure what the policy is, but for our, from our perspective, this is the, this is the best way for them moving forward. And this is a system that fuels not only DPW, it fuels police vehicles, fire vehicles, it basically provides fuel school vehicles, it provides fuel for... it's basically provides fuel, school vehicles, it provides fuel for all of the city vehicles.
I think there might be some confusing things going on here about capital improvements and how the city uses that money. That's, it's not used for, for pay raises or?
Well, we certainly.
That's not going to be, let's be careful of straying off the, off the subject on this, but you can answer if you feel it's germane, but.
All I can say is that, you know, we present, the charter requires these two separate things to happen, the capital improvement program and the budget, and we allocate a certain percentage, and basically the funding, like, for example, the funding, some of the funding to construct this project will use enterprise funds, sewer and water, because those vehicles also utilize it, as well as general fund. There's some borrowed money that we borrow for capital funds, as well as funds from our stabilization account. So it's definitely a separate part of our, of the way that we fund our city, and it's a relatively small percentage relative to the size of our operating budget, in terms of that percentage.
Thank you. So Counselor Dwight, then Counselor Goodwell.
Just by way, I think you may be confusing with above-ground fuel storage, that for heating fuel, it's required that you, that you know, we no longer put heating oil underground, and so that's a little different than this is, this is, like, gas stations don't have above-ground tanks, that you wouldn't see them, they would be underground, but they're considerable more fail safes involved in that.
Counselor. Yes, does this project cost include the removal of the underground storage tanks?
That has, that's part of the project as well, yeah, and we've been doing that, prepping for that, and doing some work related to that, site work related to that, so yeah.
And is there any?
We obviously have to keep, have a maintain, a functioning farm.
Right, right. Is there any indication of contaminated soil issues?
There is, not directly around the farm, but there have been some test borings done in other areas, not related to that, but we've been addressing that through the project, so we don't believe there'll be any long-term contamination issues, yeah. And again, the, the idea is to, is to replace them before an issue arises, given their age, yeah.
Right. Anyone else? Stick with the council for a second, any other counselor, council manic questions? No? We'll go back to the public? Oh.
I'm sorry, go, I was going to move to close the hearing, but.
One more time?
Seconded.
Well, okay. Any member of the public who'd like to speak on this, having, having heard the, this discussion? Welcome to, okay. Well, then, hearing done, there's a motion to close the public hearing made by Counselor Dwight, and seconded by Counselor Labarge. Any discussion on that? All those in favor closing the hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
No abstentions, the hearing is closed. That comes back on the consent agenda later. All right. Any announcements for me, certainly, any one-minute announcements for members of the council? Counselor Dwight.
Again, on the Charter Review Committee and the discussion, actually, I may refer to the co-chair, who is present, so I may rely on her, her support if I, if I space this out. Basically, at this stage, we are, we were, it was a continuation discussion, one central discussion about how to increase and expand access by underserved or marginalized communities that are not necessarily aware perhaps, or about the discussions relative to the charter. There was a lengthy discussion that I think will be continued, but at the same time, there was some built-in frustration, and it's not, and it's not just limited to just marginalized communities, and by and large, some of the frustration comes from the fact that Tuesday night, what do you want to do? Let's go sit, Charter Review Committee meeting, see what they're talking about. It's not, or, or share what our frustrations are, and I don't think people understand that, or necessarily know that the, this is the equivalent of the city's constitution. This is, this is how we, we decide how we are going to govern ourselves, and that public input is gratefully received. And, and, but again, you know, I do understand, I, I don't, I don't think I would pick out an outfit on a Tuesday night to go to a meeting if I weren't part of the committee necessarily, but. What else could we talk? We talked about, what was, what was the beginning part of the meeting, Sam, that we discussed? What were the agenda items that?
The proposals about the absence.
Oh, right, the vacancy of the mayor's office, which, and subsequent to that, that we received an email from Mark Warner, who points out that, with some concern, that in subsection B in that item, which is 39, I think, but, about the vacancy that says, or it states that, in the event of a vacancy, that the council president will serve as mayor for, if, if the term is, if the remainder of the term is 21 months.
She just get up and speak.
I think you're, you're confusing that issue with what we talked about, which was about the mayor being out of the city.
Right, I'm sorry, of course you're right. Yes, yes, yes. Well, confusion, I think, is very obvious, but the, yes, there's all, in the event that there was a temporary vacancy by the mayor, and to clarify the language as to what constitutes that, what responsibilities would be, come under the aegis of the council president, should they be required to assume it, but also the threshold, and part of the discussion is driven by the fact that with the ability, basically, to communicate directives and things like that, to be involved in the event of an emergency, the mayor would have to be pretty damn far away, probably in another country, in order to not be able to respond or come back in time, so that we would try to discuss the possibility of readjusting the language as it is, to, to recognize and acknowledge that currently things are different, our access is different. So, and we did, we did vote. We voted on, when did we vote on?
We did, Straddle, but the few.
Right, and I, and I already addressed that, yes, thank you, okay. That's the end of that really scattered gum. I did that, the last council, the last council meeting, stuff I referred to, so.
Well, I mean, that's the kind of granular issue that the, the charter.
Granular is a generous description.
It's sort of important.
It's sort of important.
Wow.
And you're doing your part with outreach for all the 12 people who are watching us now on TV.
Well, they're.
Including some stray, some cats and dogs that are just home alone, I think.
Yeah.
But thank you, that, it's always good to have that report about this ongoing committee. And, and when do you meet again? Just a reminder for?
Tuesday at 6:30.
Yep, this is coming Tuesday.
It's coming Tuesday, so, right here, if people want to.
I believe so, no, over, up in the hearing.
Meet in the second floor of the city hall.
Yeah.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any other announcements from any counselors? No? Are there any communications from the mayor this evening?
Yeah.
Okay, so now we have three resolutions. The first is the first reading of 19.112, Resolution Support of Right to Counsel in Eviction Cases and Eviction Ceiling to Promote Housing Opportunity and Mobility. As we sometimes do, can I prevail on one of the sponsors to read this into the record? Perhaps Counsel, Counselor Shara?
Okay, sure.
Okay.
In the City Council, July 11th, 2019, upon the recommendation of Counselor Jean Louis Shara and Counselor William H. Dwight, R. 19.112, Resolution in Support of Right to Counsel in Eviction Cases and Eviction Ceiling to Promote Housing Opportunity and Mobility. Whereas, over 40,000 households in Massachusetts were served with eviction notices in 2018, and whereas, community legal aid represents and advises Northampton residents about their eviction cases, but the need is far greater than the funding for community legal aid services, and whereas, many tenants are unaware of their rights and legal protections both in and out of the courtroom, and whereas, overall, over 92% of Commonwealth tenants received no legal guidance once an eviction notice was delivered, nor assistance from an attorney in defending the eviction in court, and whereas, access to critical legal resources, guidance, and support from a legal advocate prior to an eviction proceeding can protect people from being displaced by an eviction, prevent homelessness, and create a path to housing stability. And whereas, the following Right to Counsel bills have been refiled for the 2019, 2020 legislative session, and assigned to the Joint Committee on the Judiciary for hearing on July 16th, 2019, S. 913 by Senator Sal N. D. Domenico, and H. 3456 by Representative China Tyler, both titled An Act to Ensure Right to Counsel in Eviction Proceedings, and H. 1537, An Act Establishing a Right to Counsel in Certain Eviction Cases, filed by Representatives David M. Rogers and Michael S. Day. And whereas, since 1988, over 1 million such eviction cases have been filed in Massachusetts, and once filed, become part of that tenant's eviction record, documenting the tenant's history of having, ever having sued or been sued by a landlord. And whereas, regardless of fault, outcome, or underlying basis for a court filing, possessing any record of an eviction filing can affect a tenant's ability to secure housing, and may give a landlord reason to reject their application. And whereas, in 2013, the Massachusetts Trial Court began placing eviction record information online, making a tenant's court record history easily accessible to the public and to tenant screening companies, which routinely recommend rejection of tenants, rejections of tenants, for having been in court regardless of the outcome of the case or proof of clerical error. And whereas, even children and minors named in eviction proceedings risk permanent records that impact their search for housing when they become adults. And whereas, many landlords routinely file a notice to quit simply as a matter of course, as a conclusion of a tenancy, and are unaware of the collateral consequences of eviction records, or of the growing record of evictions they themselves are accumulating. And whereas, bills H. 3566 and S. 824, quote, promoting housing opportunity and mobility through eviction sealing homes, sponsored by Representative Michael Moran and Senator Joseph Boncor, respectively, have been assigned to the Joint Committee on the Judiciary for hearing on July 16th, 2019. And whereas, these bills would protect tenants from being unfairly branded with an eviction record by sealing records until a judgment is rendered, ensuring the accuracy of records while not altering the legal rights of landlords, property owners, or tenants. Now, therefore be it resolved, that the Northampton City Council hereby states its support of the right to counsel for tenants in eviction proceedings, and the Acts Establishing and Ensuring Those Rights, S. 913, H. 3456, and H. 1537. Be it further resolved, that the Northampton City Council also hereby supports S. 824 and H. 3566, the Acts to Promote Housing Opportunity and Mobility Through Eviction Ceiling. Be it further resolved, the administrative assistance of the City Council shall cause a copy of this resolution to be sent to the state sponsors of the Acts to Ensure Right to Counsel in Eviction Proceedings, Senator Sal N. D. Domenico and Representative China Tyler, the sponsors of an Act Establishing a Right to Counsel in Certain Eviction Cases, Representatives David M. Rogers and Michael S. Day, the sponsors of the Acts Promoting Housing Opportunity and Mobility Through Eviction Ceiling, Representative Michael Moran and Senator Joseph Boncor, chairs of the Joint Committee of the Judiciary, Senators James B. Eldredge and Representative Claire D. Cronin, State Representative Lindsey Sabadoza, State Senator Joe Comerford, House Speaker Robert DeLeo, State Senate President Karen Spilka, and Governor Charles Baker.
Move, approval? Seconded, seconded by Counselor Goodwell, and by Counselor Dwight. So, discussion?
I'll start. First, I have, I have a couple of amendments I want to make first, if that's okay.
Of course.
As you heard in public comment, this was, this hearing is next week, and so we, we moved fast to get this on the agenda for, for this meeting. So, there are a couple of things that I would like to have added. As was noted, Senator Joe Comerford and Lindsey, Representative Lindsey Sabadoza are cosponsors, so I wanted to amend the first, now therefore be it resolved, to say, now therefore be it resolved, that the Northampton City Council hereby states its support of the right to counsel for tenants in eviction proceedings, and this is the change, and joins our state senator, our state legislators, Senator Joe Comerford and Representative Lindsey Sabadoza, who are cosponsors, in supporting the Acts Establishing and Ensuring Those Rights.
Seconded. The motion, seconded by Counselor Dwight. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No abstentions, motions approved. You have the floor.
I have one, I have another one, very similar. The next, be it further resolved, that the Northampton City Council also hereby supports with cosponsors Senator Joe Comerford and Representative Lindsey Sabadoza, S. 824. So just after cosponsors, adding Senator Joe Comerford and Representative Lindsey Sabadoza before the bill numbers.
Seconded.
Okay. So, a motion made, and seconded, any discussion on that amendment? Hearing, no discussion. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
No abstentions, amendments approved.
Thank you. And, just continuing on, so I, I would, they all had to leave, but I wanted to thank the attorneys that were here, Jennifer Derringer and Pamela Schwartz, for their powerful comments, and especially Joel Feldman, who, who approached me about the state legislation and brought it to my attention, and I thank him for, for that, and for his help on this resolution. As soon as I spoke to Joel about it, I knew I wanted to add my voice to those calling for these changes. I think everyone should have a right to counsel in any legal situation, but certainly when one's home and their basic human right to shelter is at risk, should they have a right to have counsel assist them on that. So, having sat on the Community Development Block Grant Committee with Counselor Labarge now for five years, I've heard about the really remarkable work that community legal aid does, specifically around this issue, and, and how the need far exceeds the resources, you know, the meager resources that they, that we are able to provide them with, community development block grants, and the other resources. And so as you heard Jennifer Derringer, Derringer say, they turn away at least 50% of the people who are, are seeking their help. And then you heard the other fairly horrifying statistics from Pamela and Joel about how rare it is for tenants to have any representation. So, but I also, I've been able to hear the success stories with Counselor Labarge from community legal aid, and, and you got to hear a couple of them tonight, and what can really happen when people do get this representation. And as she said, they often are just little, they're little things that people need help with, they're just sort of little situations sometimes, that if someone can step in and assist that tenant, it's the difference between them having a home and not having a home. So, when, and it's, it's the difference between someone's life sort of maintaining and them being in a situation where it can really snowball, and be painful and dangerous, and as you heard, almost impossible for them to regain housing after that point. And I think it's particularly appalling that children and minors who are named in these eviction proceedings of no fault or consequence of their own, end up carrying these eviction records with them, and, and that this seems like a really blatantly obvious way that we can help end sort of generational cycles of homelessness. It's appalling to me that children can have these records, and then that impacts their ability to, to have homes when they are adults. So I know that having attorneys do this kind of work takes resources, but I really think it should be a, a basic right in our legal system, that someone have access to representation when their very home is in jeopardy. And I would love to see community legal aid, who again, does amazing work here in our community, be able to do this work fully funded, and that the other attorneys who do this work are funded, but that also, if, if there was funding for this, there are many more who would do this work. So, I just think this is a, a basic right that we all need to support.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? If you don't mind, I will defer to the cosponsor, and then go to Counselor Labarge.
The disparity in justice, I mean, we were very proud of our justice system, but there are, there are some serious points of shame, and, and there is a gross inequity, particularly people of a certain class, of a certain cultural identity, that, and clearly more vulnerable. And, and, you know, we don't have a more glaring example than, say, Jeffrey Epstein, who has very expensive representation, managed to avoid criminal prosecution at the highest level because he had the means to pay for it. And the fact that people of much better moral character than Jeffrey Epstein are in jeopardy of losing their homes, being homeless, and having their lives redefined in a moment when they're most vulnerable, by a system that, that literally is stacked against them. And what Joel spoke about was that, that trying somehow to offset that with a, with actually a relatively comparatively meager attempt to try and, at least try and tip the scales a little bit back, and, I mean, you know, this is not a panacea by any means, but the fact that it's so egregious, the absence of representation, you operate, in a very complicated legal situation, that people who have no means or, nor the wherewithal to defend themselves against a practiced and well-paid attorney who is subsidized by a landlord, the, the. attorney who is subsidized by a landlord, the fact that this situation exists is mortifying. And it's very shameful. And we're not entitled to brag about our judicial system, particularly in this circumstance when there is no guarantee of representation in these courts, in these actions. So, this, and particularly, you know, the eviction ceiling issue, you are condemned just by someone sending you an eviction notice. It's not even, it doesn't even get adjudicated at that point. You are, as Counselor Schwartz had said, branded with a scarlet E. And as Counselor Shara was referring to, you don't have to be, you don't even have to be the Leece in order to be so tainted. And that's, this is just grotesque. And we, and given the numbers that are described here, and given the growth of homelessness and displaced people, and given the fact that the huge, the disproportionate amount happening to persons of color and persons of a certain class, it is, it's, it is an obscenity that needs some, this is a slight adjustment. This isn't, this is not a solution by any stretch. But when Counselor Shara had mentioned this to me and told me about it, there was, actually it struck me so bizarrely out of whack that I thought that even under the worst circumstance, we wouldn't find ourselves, this situation doesn't exist, this is a misinterpretation. It's true. It is, we actually are this bad. So, I think it is incumbent upon us at least to lend our support and emphatic endorsement of this and more. And it is my hope that at least this in some way allows our cosponsor representatives to leverage this in some way, although, and I do hope that the legislature will be responsive, move it out of committee, and actually take a vote on it and vote in the affirmative, as I hope the same thing will happen here tonight.
Thank you very much. Counselor Labarge, would you want to?
Yes, thank you. I just think, just hearing Pamela Schwartz this evening, it's a disgraceful situation that's happening here. And to have families actually being monitored and reading what happens here of information of a family, a child, or whatever, who has been evicted, I think you're looking at their rights. I feel that they should have, definitely have legal aid, there should be a representative. I feel that I am hoping that this is going to pass, no matter what. To not even know that you have representation, or you can't get representation, is the wrong way to go. And I know for a fact in the city of Northampton that we are very strong, very vocal about whoever you are, that we as counselors will take care of you and do it the right way. And I am going to support this 100%. And Counselor Shara, I thought I heard tonight that there is a meeting that's going to be held at the State House, I think it's next Tuesday. Would you like a second reading on this tonight so we could get this to move to Boston?
Thank you for that offer.
Counselor Bidwell? I was going to ask about a second reading too. I assume that would be appropriate. It certainly is no surprise that the deck is stacked pretty horribly against tenants in housing situations, but the magnitude of it, to have it quantified the way this resolution does, and to have a personal face put on it, the way we heard from attorneys, is very, very powerful. So, I really appreciate Counselor Shara and Dwight bringing this forward. What strikes me is the irony that increasingly, I think, the social services and the housing worlds are agreeing that stability of housing is at, we have policies called Housing First, because so much good outcomes in health, in education, in recovery from addiction, in prevention of or avoidance of a life of crime, it's all tied to the stability of housing. So, on the one hand, we know this, and we have public policies moving increasingly in the direction of that. And then on the other hand, we allow this unbelievable, these incredible roadblocks that get in the way of that stability of housing. So, the irony is really dramatic, and it makes it especially compelling that this state legislation be supported. So, I appreciate the counselors for bringing it forward, and I'll support it. Anyone else to comment on this? So, even if you're successful in passing this, some of it costs no money, or next to no money, and some of it presumably has to be funded, which is, I mean, community aid organizations fight for funding now, so that will be the second battle you fight if you're successful. Is that, is that correct? I mean, okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Want a roll call on this? No discussion, roll call.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Suspend the rule.
Second.
There's a motion to suspend the rules to allow for two readings tonight. Any discussion on suspension of rules? All those in favor of spending rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Move the second reading, please.
Suspended, and it was made and seconded to have a second reading tonight. Any discussion on second reading? Okay. Then we'll have a roll call, please.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Approved on second reading. Are there resolutions on second reading? First is 19.095, a resolution to redesignate the city of Northampton Cultural District. Motion on this, please.
So, moved.
Second?
Made and seconded. Any discussion on this resolution on second reading? Have a roll call on this.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Approved on second reading. Next is 19.096, a resolution encouraging the Northampton Board of Health and the Mass General Law Legislature Legislature to take action to increase measles immunization rates in our communities, made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Labarge. Any discussion on second reading tonight? Oh, Counselor Bidwell? I don't really have anything to add to the compelling comments from Reverend Azian. I would add, though, that since we drafted the resolution, and there were at that point 1,044 cases of measles reported in the country, that was as of June 13th, by July 3rd, that had gone up to 1,109. So, the measles reports continued, the public health community continues to be concerned about this. So, I continue to think it's appropriate that we urge our legislators to act on this. I think, very compelling case it's made for the removal of the religious exemption. Do we have that figure appear in the resolution that required? The resolution had the figure as of June 13th, 2019. In the last three, I'm not suggesting we. You don't want to change it? No, no, just as a point of information. It continues to increase. Absolutely. Thank you very much. Any other discussion on the second reading? Okay. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Okay. Approved on second reading. Are there resolutions on second reading? First is 19.095, a resolution to redesignate the city of Northampton Cultural District. Motion on this, please.
So, moved.
Second?
Made and seconded. Any discussion on this resolution on second reading? Have a roll call on this.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Okay. Approved on second reading. Next is 19.096, a resolution encouraging the Northampton Board of Health and the Mass General Law Legislature to take action to increase measles immunization rates in our communities, made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Labarge. Any discussion on second reading tonight? Oh, Counselor Bidwell?
I don't really have anything to add to the compelling comments from Reverend Azian. I would add, though, that since we drafted the resolution, and there were at that point 1,044 cases of measles reported in the country, that was as of June 13th, by July 3rd, that had gone up to 1,109. So, the measles reports continued, the public health community continues to be concerned about this. So, I continue to think it's appropriate that we urge our legislators to act on this. I think, very compelling case it's made for the removal of the religious exemption. Do we have that figure appear in the resolution that required? The resolution had the figure as of June 13th, 2019. In the last three, I'm not suggesting we. You don't want to change it? No, no, just as a point of information. It continues to increase. Absolutely. Thank you very much. Any other discussion on the second reading? Okay. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Okay. Approved on second reading. Are there resolutions on second reading? First is 19.095, a resolution to redesignate the city of Northampton Cultural District. Motion on this, please.
So, moved.
Second?
Made and seconded. Any discussion on this resolution on second reading? Have a roll call on this. Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Okay. Approved on second reading. Next is 19.096, a resolution encouraging the Northampton Board of Health and the Mass General Law Legislature to take action to increase measles immunization rates in our communities, made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Labarge. Any discussion on second reading tonight? Oh, Counselor Bidwell?
I don't really have anything to add to the compelling comments from Reverend Azian. I would add, though, that since we drafted the resolution, and there were at that point 1,044 cases of measles reported in the country, that was as of June 13th, by July 3rd, that had gone up to 1,109. So, the measles reports continued, the public health community continues to be concerned about this. So, I continue to think it's appropriate that we urge our legislators to act on this. I think, very compelling case it's made for the removal of the religious exemption. Do we have that figure appear in the resolution that required? The resolution had the figure as of June 13th, 2019. In the last three, I'm not suggesting we. You don't want to change it? No, no, just as a point of information. It continues to increase. Absolutely. Thank you very much. Any other discussion on the second reading? Okay. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor Labarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
them into this, into this fund that's specifically for unused earned leave. So you've done it the past four years since we set up the account. And it basically allows us to deal with fluctuations in when people retire and are entitled to various degrees of payouts depending on the contract and their service.
Any questions? Hearing none, then all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Great. The next is, upon the recommendation of the mayor, 19104. An order to appropriate FY 2020 cash capital funds for various capital projects. Order that the following capital projects are appropriated from the general fund FY 2020 capital account. Central Services Municipal Building Elevator Shaft Roof Repair, $40,000. Central Services Municipal Building Replace Boiler, $45,000. Central Services Municipal Building Upgrade Security Upgrades to the Collector and Parking Office, $20,000. Central Services Replace the HVAC Technician's Van, $45,000. Central Services Senior Center Space Utilization Study, $10,000. Central Services Fire Station Replace Cooling Condensers, $25,000. Information Technology Services Municipal Broadband Study, $30,000. Fire Rescue, a vehicle lift for their, for their repair shop, $48,000. Fire Rescue, a staff vehicle replacement rotation, $42,000. Parks and Recreation Playing Field Maintenance, $15,000. DPW Traffic Calming, $10,000. And DPW Wood Waste Disposal, $10,000. For a total of $340,000. Do we have a motion in finance?
Make a motion.
Second?
So this is, as you know, as part of the capital improvement program every year, one of the, one of the funding sources, it's called cash capital. So these were actually, this cash capital budget was adopted as part of the FY 2020 budget. And so now, this is the first meeting in FY 2020, so we're basically asking you to please now appropriate those funds to these capital projects that were outlined in the capital improvement program. We are asking for two readings because we want to get the, some of these, these are construction projects, and we want to get them going as soon as we can. And again, this is not your first time seeing them because they were part of the capital improvement program and part of that document that you, that you held a hearing on and, and approved. So that's what the purpose is, and each one of these projects are contained in the capital improvement program with descriptions, et cetera.
Council of Barge has a question.
Sure.
Mayor, maybe you could explain, I think, the Senior Center Space Utilization Study, could you just explain a little bit about it?
Sure. So, as you know, the Senior Center was, is now open for, yeah. And, and, and we've, sort of the, the needs of programmatic needs and some of the space needs are sort of ever-changing. And we've already done some kind of, some changes within the Senior Center in terms of moving some uses around things that, we, some of the rooms, because we have such an increased need for programming. And so one of the things, we've done this sort of on an ad hoc basis, but one of the things we want to do and what Ms. Westburg wants to do is to actually have an architect come in and just really look at the space and see, is, are there ways they could utilize it more efficiently to account for all this new program? Particularly looking at, you know, some of the, some of the larger wide-open spaces, and is there a way to create more usable public space? And so, you know, one great example is, you know, when we first built the center, we had a computer room that had, you know, a room full of desktop computers, and that's like all it could ever be used for. Now, most people don't use desktop computers, so we're sort of converting that room, and we're having a cart full of laptops that people can use, and they can be, they can teach computer classes anywhere in the Senior Center. It doesn't have to be this room that can never be used for anything else because it's full of desktops. So those kinds of things are happening, and as new people are retiring, the boomers, there's, they may, they're not, maybe so much interested in making dresses for dolls, and they're interested in other kinds of activities. So we're trying to really make sure that that building, that we're using the space to the fullest possible. So this is just going to have someone come in and just really take a look at it and give us some sense of if there are changes that we need to make going forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the mayor on this one? Hearing none, then all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right. The next one is a long one. It's 19108, and it's an order to authorize the FY 2020 intermunicipal agreements. Order that whereas Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 4A allows for joint operations of public activities among governmental units, and whereas Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 4A requires that such intergovernmental agreements be approved in a city by the city council and the mayor, and whereas the city of Northampton provides services to and shares services with other municipalities, therefore pursuant to Mass General, Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 4A, the city council hereby authorizes the city of Northampton to enter into the following intermunicipal agreements for FY 2020. All of these agreements are for one year unless otherwise noted. Contract with the Town of Williamsburg for building inspection and zoning enforcement services, the agreement to provide the Town of Williamsburg with a service for a lump sum fee. Contract with the Town of Williamsburg for electrical inspection services, the agreement is to provide the Town of Williamsburg with services with permits, fees turned over to the city of Northampton. Contract with the towns of Amherst, Hadley, and East Hampton for municipal hearing officer services, agreement to provide municipal hearing officer services pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 148A, Section 2. Dear complaints related to alleged violations of the state building codes or state fire codes for a lump sum per the agreement. Contracts with the Town of Amherst, Chesterfield, Covington, Hadley, Middlefield, Pelham, Williamsburg, Goshen, and Worthington to provide veteran services officer services. Agreement to provide these services to the various communities and assessments to the individual towns per agreement. Contract with the towns of Granby, Hadley, Amherst, South Hadley, and East Hampton to provide sealer of weights and measures services, the agreement to provide these services to the various communities and assessments to the individual towns per the agreement. Contract with the Franklin County Regional Council of Governments to monitor and support the greater Franklin County economic target area. Contract with the Town of Amherst for kennel services, Town of Amherst to provide kennel space for dogs in the custody of the Northampton Animal Control Officer per that agreement. Contract with the Franklin Regional Council of Governments to partner with the city of Northampton through its health department relative to the following contracts. One, to provide services related, or relative to the Hampshire Medical Reserve Corps, and two, to provide emergency management services for the Hampshire Public Health Emergency Preparedness Coalition. A contract with Amherst, South Hadley, Pelham, Ware, Belcher Town, and East Hampton, agreement to jointly create a coalition called the Hampshire Opiate Abuse Prevention Collaborative, charged with the mobilization of local boards of health, medical providers, and educational facilities, social service agencies, community organizers, and other, others in Hampshire County to create sustainable policies, programs, and practices to change community ideas and expectations regarding opiate use and abuse, as well as to reduce the morbidity and mortality rates that result from opiate use and abuse. A Pioneer Valley Opiate Data Collaborative, a contract with Bay State Health, Inc., and the city of Springfield Department of Health and Human Services, Hampden DA, Northwestern DA, Hampden Sheriff's Department, Opiate Task Force, Berkshire Opiate Abuse Prevention Collaborative, North Coaburn Community Coalition, Partners for Healthier Community, Inc., an agreement to work cooperatively to create methods to collect, store, and aggregate data regarding opiate use and the abuse in the region with the goal of analyzing trends and identifying short and long-term intervention strategies. Contract with the Pioneer Valley Mosquito Control District, working under the oversight of the Massachusetts Department of Agriculture. Focused on mosquito surveillance and control, the city through its health department participates in this regional effort to assist Western Massachusetts communities with mosquito-related health concerns. Contract with the towns of Williamsburg, Goshen, Southampton, Chesterfield, Huntington, Hadley, and West Hampton. This agreement provides for leisure fish hosting and for, and for an annual fee for FY 2020 through 2022. Contract with the towns of Amherst and Pelham to seek and accept grants where possible and to otherwise explore the mutual advantages of electricity, community aggregation. Contract with the Pioneer Valley Bike Share and to enter into agreements with the cities of West Springfield, Chicopee, and the Town of Hadley to participate in Pioneer Valley Bike Share program along with the following entities which are already part of the existing intermunicipal agreement for the program, and that would be Hoyok Springfield, Amherst, South Hadley, UMass, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and East Hampton, already approved through FY 2021. Contract to participate in the Connecticut River Task Force with the police departments of East Hampton, Hadley, South Hadley, Chicopee, and the Northwestern District Attorney in partnership with the Massachusetts Environmental Police to enhance law enforcement efforts on the Connecticut River due to the heavy volume of boating activity within the regional boundaries of adjacent agencies. It's a three-year agreement that runs until May of 2022. Agreement for fiber optic cable with the Five College Net LLC. Agreement to allow the city to use four strands of the cable network, including the right to transport and distribute digital signals for data. Renewal of this agreement for five years from 2019 to 2024, and allowing for automatic renewals for another five years from 2024 to 2028. Public health substance use, health information exchange, and DART case management database. The agreement to share data on opiate use among these entities. Hampshire County Police Departments, Amherst, Belcher Town, Chesterfield, East Hampton, Goshen, Granby, Hadley, Hatfield, Huntington, Middlefield, Plainfield, South Hadley, Southampton, Ware, Williamsburg, Amherst College, and Hampshire County EMS and Fire Department Providers, Behavioral Health Network, CSO, Northampton Recovery Center, Coolidge Dickinson Hospital, Bay State Health Systems, the Northwestern District Attorney, Massachusetts Ambulance, TRIP Data, Marthas, Department of, Department of Public Health, Mad Registry of Vital Records, Death Certificate Data, Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Crime Research Unit, National Incident-Based Reporting System, PNP, Mass PAT, Maven and Other Mass CHIP Data, and other relevant behavioral health services and substance use-related data. An agreement to participate in the Domestic Violence Intervention Project, a regional partnership formed between the Northwestern DA's Office, Safe Passage, New England Learning Center for Women in Transition, and area police departments. It's a four-year agreement to December 2020. Agreement to participate in the Northwestern District Anti-Crime Task Force with all communities and the respective law enforcement entities within the jurisdiction of the Northwestern District, which are within the jurisdiction of the Northwestern District Courts and that of the Northwestern District Attorney's Office. Multi-year agreement with no end date. A contract with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission and multiple towns for the Mass in Motion Program renewed for three more years through 2022. The following are agreements currently authorized by the city that have not expired. Contract with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for EPA Stormwater MS4 Permit Assistance that runs through March 2022. Paramedic Intercept Agreements with multiple towns and ambulance districts through November of 2041. Contract with Pioneer Valley Transit Authority for Senior Transportation Services through November 2041. Contract with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for Local Planning Technical Assistance through the Local District Technical Assistance and the Local Technical Assistance Programs that runs through the end of FY 2020. Contract with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for Traffic and Transportation Analysis through the Federal Department of Transportation Unified Work Program that runs through 2020. Contract with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for Historic Preservation Planning through the Community Preservation Act Program that's going to run through 2020, and a contract with Greenfield Community Colleges to use one strand of our five college fiber network for annual fee per the agreement that would run through 2022. So do we have a motion in finance?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second?
It was a mouthful.
Yeah.
Wow. So, so this is something, there are no new agreements here. There, in a few cases, we're adding communities to some agreements, as was noted in the Lake Share. Sealer of Weights and Measures, we've just recently added Hadley and East Hampton. I don't know if we've tried to think of any other expansions, but, I mean, I, I just always think this is impressive to see all in one document because it kind of shows the collaborations that are happening in the valley, and in many cases, Northampton's, you know, leading the collaborations. I note the, one of the ones related to the database around opiate use, that's one that the city got a grant through the state to help create, and actually Hampshire Hope and our health department actually presented that database at a, at a conference in Atlanta and got a call from NIH after the conference that they wanted to take a closer look at our database because they think it's a really good model potentially for the nation, for a national database. So there's some really great work going on collaboratively between agencies, and I think it's, particularly in Western Mass, I think it's something that we are, we're good at and proud of because we just don't have the economy of scale so we can, you know, combine. Like the laser fish project's another great one where we're hosting laser fish for all these small towns that need to do document storage. They don't have that capacity, but the state gave us a grant, and so we're providing the, the storage, and they're, you know, they're now able to put their documents online and store them. So anyway, anyway, it's always a good annual look at the things that we're involved in.
Any questions for the mayor on any of those? Councilor Dwight?
The strand for, out of our five college fiber network for Greenfield Community College, is that for the nursing program?
Yes, it is. It's for the nursing program at, at, at Smith Vocational, the LPM program. So we have an agreement to let them use some of it.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? And we have one more, 19109. In order to authorize gift fund expenditure by the Human Rights Commission, order that Northampton City Council, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, authorizes the expenditure of up to $1,000 from the general gift fund to be used by the Human Rights Commission for expenses related to their mission. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
This is actually, came to me as a request from the chairs of the Human Rights Commission. They don't have a formal budget in, you know, in, in our city budget, but they've been really trying to step up some of their outreach and education and brochures, and they've done some forums around the city. And so they were asked, they requested if they could be allotted a, a small budget for the year to be able to do this sort of thing. So I'm asking to basically authorize them to access up to $1,000 in FY 20 to be used for those purposes. And again, it would just be for the use of the Human Rights Commission to carry out their, to carry out their mission over the next year.
Council of Barge, you're, I know you're involved with them. Do you have any questions?
No, because, I mean, if people want to go ahead and donate money to the Human Rights Commission, that would go right into the.
We certainly can also accept gifts, and that's something they can do as well. As you know, the council has to authorize the spend, expenditure of gifts, and so, as you know, for several of our committees, we, you know, at the beginning of the year, will often authorize up to a certain amount, like the reuse committee or other committees that have a budget like this. I think, do the youth commission have a gift fund as well?
They, they have a fair amount of money that's been saved.
Exactly, yeah. So some of these smaller committees that aren't staffed and, and want to carry out programming, this is a good way for them to have access to it, so.
Council?
Do you want two readings?
Um, it, it, it's not crucial, but obviously this is money we already have, we're just basically saying you have access to it. I mean, I think we've requested two readings only because there's like six or seven weeks be, before the next meeting, so.
Yeah, I was just wondering what the urgency was.
Yeah.
It's just the summer schedule?
Yeah, I think it was more just recognizing that there's a long period between now and then, and that they wanted to try to plan programming for the fall.
Okay. But I'm hearing it's not like an emergency.
No one has told me it's an emergency.
Okay. Well, if you ask, they'll say it is, so.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? That all in favor of.
Human rights are under attack around the world, Mr. President.
That is true, but it probably costs more than $1,000 to take care of.
Every small investment helps, so.
No doubt, no doubt.
So, all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. And that being the end of the agenda, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are back in city council, and we're going to go to these financial orders. First is 19.103. In order to transfer funds from FY 2019 unused earned leave to compensate, to compensated absences reserve fund, motion on this.
Second.
Made by Council of Barge, second by Council Dwight. Any discussion on this financial order? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Council of Barge.
Yes.
Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Nash.
Yes.
Council O'Donnell.
Yes.
Council Shara.
Yes.
Council Bidwell.
Yes.
Council Carney.
Yes.
Council Dwight.
Yes.
And Council Klein.
Yes.
And Council of Barge.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules. Any discussion on suspension of rules, we'll have a second reading. All those in favor of suspending rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Motion on second reading, please.
Second reading.
Okay, and seconded by Council of Barge. Any discussion on second reading? Roll call, please.
Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Nash.
Yes.
Council O'Donnell.
Yes.
Council Shara.
Yes.
Council Bidwell.
Yes.
Council Carney.
Yes.
Council Dwight.
Yes.
Council Klein.
Yes.
And Council of Barge.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules. Any discussion on suspension of rules, we'll have a second reading. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Rules are suspended. Now, is there a motion on second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, made and seconded. Any discussion on second reading? Roll call, please.
Council O'Donnell.
Yes.
Council Shara.
Yes.
Council Bidwell.
Yes.
Council Carney.
Yes.
Council Dwight.
Yes.
Council Klein.
Yes.
Council of Barge.
Yes.
And Council Murphy.
Yes.
Suspend the rule.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules. Any discussion on suspension of rules, we'll have a second reading. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Rules are suspended. Now, is there a motion on second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, made and seconded. Any discussion on second reading? Roll call, please.
Council O'Donnell.
Yes.
Council Shara.
Yes.
Council Bidwell.
Yes.
Council Carney.
Yes.
Council Dwight.
Yes.
Council Klein.
Yes.
Council of Barge.
Yes.
Council Murphy.
Yes.
And Council Nash.
Yes.
That's approved. Next is 19.108. In order to authorize fiscal year 2020 intermunicipal agreements.
Move to approve.
Second. Made and seconded. Any discussion on this order? Hearing none, let's have a roll call.
Council Shara.
Yes.
Council Bidwell.
Yes.
Council Carney.
Yes.
Council Dwight.
Yes.
Council Klein.
Yes.
Council of Barge.
Yes.
Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Nash.
Suspend the rule.
And Council O'Donnell.
Yes.
Anyone else like to suspend the rule?
I'll second that, that's.
You're actually going to be the first because it was first made out of order. So you're, you're.
I move to suspend rules to allow for a second reading.
Who seconds that? Council of Barge, it's you second the suspension of rules. Okay, okay. Duly noted. Any discussion on suspension of rules?
That's the cut she wears, love.
All those in favor of suspending rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, okay, duly noted. Any discussion on suspension of rules?
That's what she wears, though.
All those in favor of suspending rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you very much. I actually do appreciate how Counselor Labarge keeps on top of that, thank you. And so now we can have a second reading. Motion.
Oh yes, so moved.
Second.
Good. Any discussion on second reading? Then roll call, please.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
And Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Approved on second reading. Next is 19-109, in order to authorize gift fund expenditure by Human Rights Commission.
To approve.
Seconded. Any discussion on this financial order? We have a roll call, please.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Approved on first reading.
Suspend the rule.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Are you good? Any discussion on suspension of rules? I'd like to affirm my support for human rights everywhere in the world. No other discussion on the suspension of rules, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed.
Move second reading.
Okay. And any abstentions to spending rules?
Sorry.
So rules are suspended with one no vote, and a motion to--
Prime vote, no.
Yeah, second reading by Counselor Dwight. Is there a second?
Second.
By Counselor Carney. Any discussion on second reading? So got all that, and ask for a roll call when we're ready.
I'm sorry, was the motion maker Counselor Dwight or Counselor Klein?
Counselor Dwight, oh, for the second reading was Counselor Dwight and then Counselor Carney.
Thank you. Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Okay, that's approved. And now 19.097 is on second reading. This is an order to surplus Prospect Street Water Department building.
Move approval, please.
Second.
And seconded by Counselor Carney. Any discussion on second reading? Do we have a discussion here on second reading, or are we just discussing what you're going to do later? Okay. So hearing no discussion on the second reading, the surplus, a building in the city. Sounds like we're ready to have a roll call.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Okay, that's approved on second reading. There are three ordinances which have to be referred. I assume we can take them as a group? Counselor, would you like to--
That would be my answer.
Okay. So those would be 19.102, an ordinance relative to parking on Glendale Road. 19-105, an ordinance to rezone five parcels from general industrial to office industrial. And 19-110, an ordinance relative to bus stops on Bridge Street. All those--
I would second move a number of--
Okay, great. So two legislative matters. Committee of, any other committees that want them?
I presume these came from TPC.
Yes, so--
A wall set for the five parcels, right.
Came out of TPC, and I'm wondering where B came from.
That came from Zonia, it was suspended.
Planning Department. So it does need to go to Planning Board also.
Yeah, that gets--
Where did A come from?
Okay.
TPC?
Yeah.
So yeah, I think legislative matters is appropriate referral for all three of these, and I don't see any reason for other committees to sign on.
And so we do--
Go to the planning board too, anyway.
Yeah.
Automatic, we don't need to send--
Yeah, we don't need to do that, right? It just goes there, and they can do what they want. Okay. So good, and that's it. So it goes to one committee, and we have the motion to the floor. Any discussion on the referral? Okay. Then all those in favor of the referrals, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? So those are referred, thank you. We have one ordinance on first reading, that is 19.025, an ordinance to rezone five parcels from URC to CB, and to include parcels in CBA-D.
I would move approval.
Okay. Second. All right. If you can get it on the screen, and there's a map attached to it as well, it has a standard enacting language that comes upon the recommendation of the mayor. Ordinance be ordained by the City Council of the City of Northampton, and City Council assembled as follows. A, oh, okay, modify the city zoning map to rezone five parcels from general industrial to office industrial. One--
That's--
No, it's--
That's the one we refer--
19-025.
Thank you.
This is 19-025.
Thank you.
This should be the last one in stack. Hopefully it's all--
I'll read it off this device, which creates pictures and words for me to read. But still upon the recommendation of the mayor. Well, this is, just to be clear, 19--
There's a hard copy.
19.025, an ordinance to rezone five parcels from URC to CB, and to include parcels in CBA-D. An ordinance of the City Council of Northampton, providing that the zoning chapter, Chapter 350, Section 3.4 Code of Ordinances of Northampton, et cetera, standard language be amended by modifying the zoning map of said code to rezone five parcels from URC to CB, and to modify Chapter 156/2 map expansion, or dash 2, to include these parcels with Central Business Architecture District. So it would be ordained by the City Council as follows. I'm pretty much repeating myself, but the exact wording is modify the city zoning map to rezone five parcels from urban residential seat to central business. And so this includes five parcels. First is, just for the record, 32A-105, which is 34 Market Street. Number two, 32A-181, 57 Bridge Street. 32A-182, 69 Bridge Street. 32A-176, and 32A-260. And I think, it sounds like that's 58 and 66 Bridge Street respectively. That's what's written. Modify the map in 156-2 to include parcels above within Central Business Architecture District. All right. So this is one of those that it's an ordinance change, but it's a picture ordinance change because we keep this information in a map as opposed to writing out the meets and bounds or coordinates or whatever in words on a page, so. So there we go. I'd be curious to know the genesis of it and the thinking, committee on legislative matters, or the mayor, whoever wishes to speak to it. Everyone is welcome.
I agree, generally to it, and then I know that legislative matters met with Ms. Mish about it. I mean, this is, over the time, we've been slowly looking at some of these parcels on this part of downtown, and so it's an attempt to align, we've done, we've made some incremental changes to central business, and so this is adding five more parcels to bring these other parcels into central business. It does go down Market Street a little bit, I think, like Joe's Pizza. I think that's one--
The parking lot.
Parking lot, exactly. So that's, and you've got a map that shows you the exact parcels, so I would defer to folks on legislative matters who are part of the hearing. If there's any, I know property owners knew about this.
Counselor Nash had, I think you contacted virtually--
I tried to contact many people. I, multiple attempts to contact all of the property owners and reaching out to the abutters. I wasn't able to reach the owner of 69 Bridge Street. I don't think the planning department was able to do that either, but I spoke to all of the other property owners, and they are supportive of this, so.
It's a natural continuation, and it makes sense given the circumstance, changing circumstances. Planner Nish came and did present, and actually, it basically is an adjustment that recognizes conditions on the ground as they have changed, and it makes, and there were no objections that were offered, actually. And the differences that they would allow or impose are relatively negligible, but it just makes, this makes more sense structurally.
Counselor Shara, you ready?
Yeah, I just want to note, it also came to community resources, and we actually had, I'd say, a handful of abutters or neighbors, people who lived in the neighborhood who did come and asked questions of Carolyn Mish, and I think had their questions answered, and felt like they understood better what the situation was. And I know Counselor Klein asked a few questions, and I think we had a pretty full conversation about it and gave it a positive recommendation.
Counselor Bidwell. I would just add that at that community resources meeting, one of the things that we talked a little bit about was that this includes properties of historic Northampton, and it provides them with somewhat greater flexibility in their operations, and since they are a very much expanding dynamic organization, I think it's great that it provides a little[1509.12]